Alright, so I want to thank everyone for taking the time to watch this particular candidate chat. This is something that I started a couple of years back because I wanted to make sure that the community was informed about the electoral, I'm sorry, electoral process. And the candidates that we actually have in these different races. I believe that's extremely important to know where they stand on the issues, to know what their principles are, and to know if this is an official running for reelection. You know, the work that they've already put in, the things they've done, the issues that they push on behalf of the community. So I have Ms. Gwen Reed Flowers Taylor here as Commissioner for District One. She is running for reelection. And can you just tell everyone again, your name and the office that you're running for in the area that it covers, please?
Right. My name is Gwen Reed Flowers Taylor. I know that's a lot, but yes, I have a lot, a long name. And I am actually seeking reelection for the district, Spalding County District One County Commission seat.
Okay, and people get a little bit confused with who their commissioners are. We see this a lot. So can you give us an idea of what area District One covers, just like some landmarks for basis?
Well, first of all, I think it's really interesting how my district is set up because a very large part of my district is within the city of Griffin. But my district begins on Hamill Road in eastern Spalding County, and it goes from there all the way out to McIntosh, out North Hill Street to McIntosh, and from over there to Amberwood and Cowan Road School. And I forgot, also Waterford. So I'm kind of in a funny zigzag shape, like a hook. But so a lot of my, almost all of my residents and voters are black.
Yeah, and I know a lot of people don't understand how that works. But we have a lot of issues that I won't get into right now. It's probably a whole other candidate chat on its own as far as the political process. But when we talk about how those districts are drawn, and some of the issues we had here recently with gerrymandering and how those concerns had to go all the way up to our court system in order for us to try to receive some type of remedy about how those districts are drawn. So when you say zigzag, funny zigzag shape, that's all I could think about is like, well, you know, sometimes you look at those lines and it's intentional, you know, the way that they're drawn. So we do have those types of concerns and people definitely need to educate themselves about what redistricting is and reapportionment is.
Right.
So who is Ms. Gwen Reed Flowers Taylor? Like, tell us about yourself. You know, a lot of people might come to the meetings and see you, but they don't really know, you know, your background and your history with.
Spalding County, my family goes back several generations of being in Spalding County. My family has always been involved in empowerment, equal rights, civil rights. You know, initially, civil rights was really all about black and white, but now it's about any minority having the ability to be able to get help. I remember walking on the, on a picket line when I was eight years old at the old, what is now the Historic City Hall. It was a police department because there were no black police officers. So I started out in a family of people who have been involved, stay involved, and are trying to be educated about what is, what is do us and how do we get that? I'm a nurse, licensed registered nurse. I have been that for the last 12 years. I am, I go to church here in Spalding County. I'm Lutheran Church, St. John Lutheran Church. So I'm not going to say that I'm very spiritual, but I do trust in God. And I think that I go to church for fellowship. I have my own relationship with God. I have a very, not big family, but I have a very supportive family. That is, that goes from my sister, my husband, my children. We're a very close network and I'm very proud of the relationships that we've built in our family. I have also been involved as an adult in voter empowerment and trying to help others who have had felonies to be able to regain their ability to be able to, whether it's to vote or to have, carry a weapon like any other citizen, to get their rights back fully. So I'm a product of the desegregation era. I was one of the first people that actually went to an integrated school. It's, that's another whole story altogether. But so I've been exposed to a lot. I served in the military for seven years, did a tour overseas in Germany. I'm not a Vietnam veteran, but I'm a Vietnam era veteran, which means that I served during the, at the end of Vietnam. So, and I, during that time in the service, I traveled extensively. So I have an idea about what is happening in places outside of Griffin. And having that knowledge and coming back here made me see that there were some things that we needed to do to step up our game in terms of what, how we're perceived in the community as a black community. So that's me in a nutshell.
Appreciate that. Because you know, a lot of times there's kind of like a disconnect and the citizens don't look at commissioners or other elected officials as normal people. Normal people that, you know, have similar backgrounds and things like that. The difference is you chose to, chose this particular path to try to make a difference. So I think we, we need to show them like you, I guess what I want to say, the humanity in our elected officials. And sometimes people don't make that connection there. It's like they see it as two separate things. So I guess the most important question we could ask is, right now, why are you seeking reelection?
Well, I get really excited when, when people ask me that. Because over the past terms that I have served, I have seen this community transition from, I won't say a sleeping giant, a sleeping turtle maybe. And we have really changed some things in the last 10 years. When I came on board as a county commissioner, there was no relationship with the city of Griffin, the city of Griffin Board of Commissioners, the school board, none of the governmental entities. And I worked very hard with my sister, who was also serving on the city of Griffin Board, to try to help bring those boards together. And as a result of that, we were able to start Archway. We were able to bring other members in, in the community to the table, not just to the table to sit, but to the table to eat and to the table to choose what it is they want to eat. So yeah, I, I think that it's important for me to continue to be able to finish the work that I've started. One of my biggest goals is to make sure that our recreational amenities in the community are equal in every, every neighborhood in our county. And, and because I live in the city of Griffin, I'm very much a city of Griffin resident. So it gives me a different perspective from all of the other commissioners because the things that are very important in our district are nowhere on the radar in their district. And someone needs to be able to verbalize and show them that there is another side besides what their experience has been. And I think that I have brought that to the table and utilized it to the good of our community.
So what do you feel are some of the issues that your constituents in your district are concerned about? And the second part, as far as those concerns go, how do you plan to address them?
That's the big question. But I think on the minds of everyone, not just our constituents, but we're at a different level with this, but everyone is concerned about inflation. It costs two times as much to buy food as it did two years ago. Costs that twice as much to buy gas to put in your car, healthcare cost. We have a lot of people in our community that are either retired or on public service, services. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that there's not enough Medicaid doctors to provide healthcare for the population that we have here. So I think access to good healthcare in our community is really important to people. And when I say healthcare, I don't just mean physical health, I mean behavioral health. Because in the world that we're living in now, all of us are a little bit stressed and some of us are probably a little bit depressed. So having access to those services is very important to me and I would like to see that grow. Not to be a stigmatism. The other thing that I think my constituents are concerned about is having jobs locally that pay them just as much money as going to Henry County or going to Atlanta. And I think we have to train a workforce up to be able to accept those jobs. And part of the challenge has been when we have had, for example, when Caterpillar came, we were so excited they were going to have three or 400 new jobs, but we couldn't find people in Spalding County who had a GED or a high school diploma. That was half of the problem and the other half was because they couldn't pass a drug screen. So we weren't able to capitalize on that. So people in McDonough, people in Butts County, people in Macon can't work at Caterpillar. So that, if there is one thing that I think people are concerned about is how will they take care of their family? You know, is there a place that will train me to do something without me having a car or me having to go to Atlanta to make that happen? I also think that my constituents are very concerned about the life our children are living, the amount of gun violence. We didn't, I didn't grow up in an era where everyone had guns. And I, and I don't care who I argue with, it's never going to be okay with me for everybody to have a gun. But we have children killing children, children being able to have access to grown up weapons. So I think that people will worry about what kind of life their children are going to have and what kind of life our seniors are going to have. Because we are about 37% of the total population, people over 55 in Griffin. And so we have a lot of people on fixed income. Back to the same thing, how will I make that money stretch? Will I be able to buy food? Will I be able to get my medicine? Will I be able to buy a birthday card for my grandson? So I don't, and while I say that this is kind of, not unusual for everyone, but this is not just playing out in Griffin and Spalding County. This is playing out in cities across the nation. So I would like to say that I had an answer for that, but I think it's much bigger than, than me just saying, we need to get people some jobs. Because the training needs to come, but I also need people to be willing to step up to the door. So that's, that needs to be strategically planned. And that's why I think that I do have the ability to help with that strategy, not only to create the strategy, but to also implement it and make sure that it, that they follow through on it.
Those are very, very valid, valid concerns. I think this, I think now is one of the most challenging times I've seen in my years of living, and not just, you know, with inflation, with just the way that the world is, is so divided with different things. And, you know, you want people to be in a position to have a quality of life that is sustainable. And it's right now, it's just so difficult to even fathom, where do you begin? You know, to, to address those issues. And we definitely need people in leadership that are willing to have the hard conversations to find solutions to these issues and to not, you know, try to just gloss over everything.
Right.
And I think that's, that's one of the things that, that we have issues with right now is people not being willing to step up to the plate and try to come together and, and work towards giving the community what, what it needs essentially. What are some of the challenges that you faced as a county commissioner? I know you like, where do I start?
Yes, just like so many people who run for office. When I came into office, I had these ideas that I just needed to be able to get there and say something and then things would change. And of course, I found out quickly that that was not how it worked. But one of the first challenges I had was that I was black, I was a woman, and I was Democrat. And I sat on a board with four, I said it to them, old white men that were all Republicans. And I don't, I'm not saying they disrespected me, but they underestimated my ability to verbalize what I, I needed for them to know. So that was for me, that first couple of years, it was really hard. And I had to learn really quickly how to help them with the things that they wanted in order for me to get the things that I needed for our community. And that worked for me. It was also kind of a situation, and I say, God, let me see this, that those groups of men were split. And by the grace of God, no one could get anything done unless I was the third vote. And that taught me a lot about what politics is. It's not, it's not about being Democrat or Republican. It is knowing how to reach across the table when it's appropriate to reach across the table. And when to use the leverage that you have that they've, they've given you. So that was the first challenge. The second challenge was it is very difficult to keep up with all the money that government spends. And I'm not ashamed to say, it took me about five years and two and a half years of that time was going to training through the Association of County Commissioners to try to learn how to follow the money. Because if you can follow the money, then you can demand to have some of the money. And you can also demand to know what they're spending it on. And then what I began to find out was that you're doing all of this stuff in all of these other places that's kind of sparse. But here we are over here in East Griffin and at Fairmont, we're living on top of each other. So for every city block on Maple Drive that has four houses, we have 20 houses in that same space. And so I realized we were sorely being underrepresented. And I, I learned to be able to share that with them in such a way that was not accusative, but to try and pull on some semblance of humanity that may have been present to let them know if you are really representing the entire county, we're only as good as our worst citizen. Our worst, only as good as the worst house that we have for people to live in. We're only as good as the worst facility we had. Which by the way, at that time was Fairmont and no work had been done there since 1962. Unbelievable. So yes, there were some challenges, but I think just through the grace of God and I promised my constituents when I, when I first got elected, I would go to all the educational training that they provided me so that I could be the best commissioner for them that I could. And I think that I've done that. I don't think that we're finished. I think we've come a good long way in the last 15 years, but I don't think that we're there yet. And I would like, there are some things that I'd like to see finished. And some of the things, I'm not really at liberty to talk about now, it would take much too long. But one of the things that I want to see is more 30-ish, 40-ish people of color stepping up and saying, I don't want to take six years to learn how to be a commissioner. I need you to tell me the stuff I need to do. So that, maybe, maybe I won't be perfect on day one, but I will know how to go in and at least run a meeting to know how to vote on stuff. Just the simple, the simple stuff. I want to be able to, and that's not happening right now. You know, we're generation, we're at least two generations apart, your age and mine. And so I'm not saying that I'm disconnected, but I really don't understand why there are so many people who appear to not really want something. That, that they've decided even at this early age, I'm settling for this. And, and I want people to not settle. I, I want them to come into the room saying, this is, this is what I've learned. This is the documentation that I have to go with it. This is wrong. I need you to fix it. And be confident that, that they can ask the right questions. So, so yeah, those have been the challenges for me. Because even the African Americans that we have sitting on boards like the Development Authority, the Airport Authority, they're still old. You know, they didn't grow up in a digital time. You know, we were still writing letters. Y'all never wrote letters. So, so yeah, it has been a challenge for me just trying to, trying to figure out how to reach, I know there are people who are, who care, but reach them at a place where it's important enough for them to, to show up, but to encourage them and empower them to let them know they can do the same thing that anybody else can do as far as being an elected official.
Yes, I, I definitely thank you for that response because as you know, I know more than anyone how there is so difficult to get people to understand why this is so important. You know, to get people to continuously show up to meetings and not just the, the commission meetings, but also the boards and committees that are, you know, the subset. And to want to actually volunteer and serve on those. So I, I know the difficulties that, that are there. And I can appreciate, you know, you wanting to be able to find a way in order to get more people involved in, in the political process, ensuring that.
We have to do that.
In order for our communities to be sustainable, we definitely have to do that. What are, I might pivot here for a second. Because that was a heavy one. No, 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 it's perfectly fine. What are some things that you think that you could improve on or essentially try to do better in the future, once, once reelected? As far as your duties and responsibilities as a commissioner?
I, you've taken the leadership class before and hopefully your listeners will know what that is. But I would like to see that, now it's a chamber program, which the chamber is not a governmental entity. But I would like to see that program morph into something that is more substantial. You know, if you go to leadership, you probably need to be a liaison to the Airport Authority so that you can actually sit in and know how things are working. We don't really give the people who complete our leadership, we're supposed to be growing leaders, but the people that are in the Leadership Academy, once they finish the academy, we don't pick them up and say, okay, take that that you just learned and go to the Board of Assessors and, and grow on this, grow on, on that. Hold on a second, sorry. Sorry, that's my four-legged children barking.
Oh, it's okay.
But, but what, what I want to do, what I, what my hope is to be able to do, and, and this is, I'm not going to be able to do it by myself, is to be able to, to get more people of color to participate, but to participate at a level that you're completing the class isn't just a certificate. It means I'm ready to be put on a board. It means that when you leave, that you know how to go to handle a meeting, whether it's your sorority, fraternity, your church. You'll know about how to handle business in that format. I also want to be able to go into those leadership classes and ask people, what would you like to do? We're not, because as commissioners, we're not really involved. We, I mean, if there's somebody that works at the county, we pay for them to take the class. But once the class is over, you're just kind of there. You got all of this knowledge, you're gung ho and you're ready to go and there's no place for you to sit. So, so what one of my main goals would be is to try and revamp that leadership program, or if that leadership program is not willing to do it, for the county and the city to create their own leadership program that will grow new leaders, will grow people who work their way into the system in a way that they don't come into it blinded. I know that's a challenge. It's going to take some partners to do that, but I think I'm not surprised by the number of college graduates, women and men of color that we have. What I am surprised about is that they're not really wanting to come and, and do something else. You know, when you're 30 and 40 years old, life happens. You have children, you, you know that. But you also know that you have to, when you're dedicated to something, you have to plan your life so that you can do that thing too. You, you can go to that meeting, you can go to the PTA and, and actually serve on the board, that, at the school board. So, so that's one of the things that I would like to do better. The other thing that I would like to do better is to ask for more money to be spent on after-school programs. Not babysitting programs, programs that teach STEM, programs that provide athletics for the kids and provide a way that they can get to it without their parents having to pay you. Pay, for me, $50 a week would be a lot. And if I have three kids, I'm going to have to pay $150 a week for them to be at after-school. So if I don't get out of work until five or six o'clock and they're out of school at 2:30, I want them to be somewhere safe. And I figure we need to work out a way, whether it's through leisure services or, or whatever kind of programs we have in the county. We have Ambuggs, we have City Park, we have Fairmont that are, actually have facilities. We should be using those. Fairmont should not be the only facility that a child from Anne Street has to come all the way over to Fairmont to go to an after-school program that doesn't cost $50 a week. So that is, that is one of the bigger goals that, that I want to do. I think that the funding should come out of leisure services, be, just because it's something that they do. I don't know if you know the director at Fairmont, but she does an after-school program, she does the school break program, she, she does Christmas program, she does, and this is with students there. Then she does all the other sports activities and that's a lot in one place. So we need to spread it around. So yeah, that, that's, that's, that's my two goals that I hope to be able to achieve. Other than the business that we've already been doing, I, I have worked from the day that we voted on the Splot for the Aquatic Center to open and there be no fee. Everyone has said, oh, we have to get people to pay for it. Well, they weren't really paying over at Kennebrew.
Right.
Swim facility, so why can't we do that now? And, and, and I can't tell you for sure, but I can pretty much tell you with about 90% certainty that that's the way it will open in May. There'll, there'll be no cost.
Oh, wow.
So, so, so hopefully the kids will have some place that they can go throughout the summer, spend the day, you know, so yeah, I, I just, I think that there are some, I don't really have like specific goals, like I want to get rid of someone or I want to do something else. But I want to see our county grow into the urbanized city. Not that Henry County is, but I want us to use the idea of smart growth. I want us to be greener. Yes, I'm one of those people who worry about greenhouse gases and the fact that we're having. Yes, I'm one of those people who worry about greenhouse gases and the fact that we're having weather that no one else has ever had. You know, in hundreds of years. I recognize that we're endangering the planet. And as a commissioner. If we're letting people take trash to the trash center and nobody's recycling. We're not doing our part. So hopefully we should be able to start a real recycling program. Um, with the expenses that if we have, um. Roadside pickup, starting in the county, meaning that. Private entities will come around and and move trash. Because in the county, that costs us about one point eight million dollars a year. And if you, it it's not gonna cost nearly that much to allow these kids to have that recreation. Or have transportation to be able to get to recreation. If I live in, but I'm from Fairmont community, I'm not gonna walk to the aquatic center. So Leisure Services will be providing a bus that is routed that will go to. Wyoming Atias Park, it'll go to City Park, it'll come back down to Ambucks and then it'll go to the Aquatic Center, then it'll make the loop again. So as long as that center is open, children and even seniors should be able to get into that transportation and get where they need to go. So yeah, that that's another goal that I'm hoping that that we see come to fruition in the next couple of months.
Yeah. Now, please don't, don't get me started. Don't even get me started about the the Aquatic Center. I'm not even gonna go there today. Uh.
Yeah. It's there. It's got water in it. And. And, uh, and while it's not where we really wanted it to be, because I did want it to be in City Park. Um, but you know, politics and at the, in the county, you have to be able to count to three. And I couldn't get anybody to count to three. Sometimes you win and sometimes you don't. But I still keep working. And and one of the things that I pride myself on as a commissioner is that. I, if I believe in something, I am gonna go and do all the investigation that I need to do to. Shore up my side of what it is that I think. But if the vote happens and and I don't get my way. It's still my job as commit, um, commissioner to figure out the best way to do even their plan. So that, you know, doesn't jeopardize anyone, it doesn't cost taxpayers an exorbitant amount of money. And then that it's available. To air and accessible to everyone in the community. Um, I pride myself on standing. Up for people and saying what other people won't say in the meeting. Uh, I'm not really that person who wants to dance all around what it is. If you're being racist. I'm, apparently you don't know. So yes, if you have to know that. I might be the one to say it. But generally, I, um. I think that I do a really good job of being truthful. I try to be honest. Um. I try not to curse at the meeting. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But sometimes the only way people are gonna understand you. Is to talk to them on the level in which they under, they understand because they're not trying.
That's very true. So your top three accomplishments as commissioner? What, what are those, you think?
Hmm. Well, I don't really think that, that I by myself have. You know, can say I did something. Because as, as I just said and said a couple of times, you have to count to three to get anything done. Or to spend money. But because of the work that Commissioner Rita Johnson has done on the South Side. I think that, um. One of the things that I'm most proud of is our bringing Archway to this community. Um, it, for the people who were involved with Archway and the work programs. It gave them an avenue to be able to express themselves, to see what government is about. And to really have a part in the decision-making process. I think it's so important for people to be heard.